Hi, everybody. We are just trying to make quorum. Thank you for your patience with us.
May I dig up the link real quick and text it to him?
All right.
And actually, it may help. I don't, you may not have, but when you send the packet, like, cut and paste that link into the email.
Oh, sure.
And I forgot to, someone mentioned it to me, and I forgot to mention it to you, that they were struggling to dig through, and I guess it doesn't sometimes show up in the HTML version. It's in the PDF, but not the HTML when you go, so. Just a pro tip for the email, letting us all know the packet's up. All right, Tony says he's hopping on. Let me. Mike says he can go till 6:45, which I guess that means 45 minutes. So we can do the plat and anything else that's important.
Sure. We do have the accessory dwelling subcommittee, and since Jamil and Alex aren't here, we could maybe, you know, pass on that until the next, try to get some other stuff going.
Okay.
Mike, explain this.
You said Mike's on?
Yes, he just joined us.
Sorry, trying to unmute and get video work in here. Technical difficulties, sorry.
I'll get it to Tony. There it is.
How's everybody doing?
Good. How are you?
You know, sitting home with kids a lot.
Okay, Tony just joined. Okay.
When's the last time you cut the beard, Jordan?
Lila cut my hair and trimmed my beard probably a month ago, and it's time to go back. She sets up a barber shop in the area.
I'm not gonna comment on the hair, but you ought to keep going with the beard.
It's been, it's an overdue for a trim.
Just go to Colorado for a few weeks, she'll fit in.
I'm in New Mexico right now, and I'm definitely fitting in.
There you go, you got it. You're there.
And I'm in Colorado, so there you go.
Do we have Tony on?
Can y'all hear me?
We can hear you barely.
I don't know, I got some error message that said to try to get back on, so let me, let me try that.
You're real quiet, but we can hear you.
Jordan, we've got Charlie on too, just so you know.
Great. Fantastic. Good evening, Charlie. Thanks for being here.
Of course.
Are we just waiting on Tony to re-log back in? Or is he still on? There he is.
Does that work? Can you hear me now?
Much better.
All right.
All right, let's call the meeting to order at 5:09. And we'll do a roll call real quick. I'll start. Jordan Scott, chair is here. And then we'll go Amy, Michael, and Tony, if y'all just want to say present.
Present.
Tony's present.
All right, fantastic. All right, y'all, we got a bit of a packed agenda, but I think we may be able to squeeze through some of this stuff. First thing we have after roll call is gonna be any public comments for items that are not on our agenda. Are there anybody from the public who would like this opportunity to speak on any matter not currently on the agenda? If so, you can signify by raising your hand. I can't remember what it is if you're calling in by phone, but if you're on either the app or on the, on the, on, by computer, you click the little hand icon, and that will let us know you're interested in speaking.
And if you're on the phone, I don't think we have anyone on the phone at the moment, but push star and then two, and that will allow you to raise your hand.
All right, I'll try to remember that next time. All right, would anybody like the opportunity to speak? All right, seeing none, well, why don't we go ahead and move on then to our consent agenda? Only item on the agenda is our minutes from our previous meeting on July 8. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve it.
All right, Amy, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Any discussion, any changes that we need to make to that agenda? I read it, or sorry, to the minutes. I was able to read it, and it looked pretty accurate. All right, hearing none, motions on the table, all in favor, we'll do a roll call. Amy, why don't you start? Signify by saying aye or nay.
Yes. Aye.
Okay, Tony?
Aye.
All right, Michael?
Aye.
And I'll also vote aye. So motion to pass, our consent agenda is unanimous. Public hearing, we're now gonna open up public hearing at, sorry, I said 5 before, I'm in New Mexico, so hopefully, let the record show, we're actually at 6 o'clock Texas time. So at 6:12, we'll open up public hearing on item number three to discuss impossible action for a plat at 401 Vail Street. Is there anybody from the public who would like to discuss this particular plat? The applicant can discuss now, and is certainly welcome to continue to discuss once we're out of public hearing. I see that Wendy Hunley, the applicant, is on. Would anybody else, Wendy, would you have anything you'd like to say at this point?
Let me get her mic unmuted. Okay, Wendy, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? I don't have anything to say. I'm just here in case you had any questions. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. We appreciate you being here tonight. It's always helpful to have the applicant on when we discuss. Is anybody else would like to discuss this during public hearing? This will be your only opportunity to discuss. Once we close public hearing, it will be discussion amongst the commissioners only. If you'd like to, you can signify by raising your hand, pressing the hand icon on your computer or app, or star two if you're calling in via phone. All right, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead then and close the public hearing at 6:13. And we will move into a regular session. Regular hearing, sorry. Discussing 401 Vail. Any comments from any of the commissioners? Well, I guess first we should ask, is Carrie available? Or Amber, can you talk to the validity of the plat? We normally ask her, does it meet requirements?
Sure, so Carrie is trying to jump on, she's been having network issues, so I'll do my best. But it is a legal plat, it does meet all the requirements. You'll notice there's a checklist in your packet that we went through and made sure that the plat met all the requirements, and so we as staff would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. And if Carrie is able to get on, just flag it, and if she wants to add anything, just let me know if I don't see her hop on. Anything from our commissioners?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Was the replat, was the replat just for the northern building line? Is, was that the, what, what was the, what was the change? It was a legal lot before, was it not?
Don't believe so. And we've been trying to, as we can, go through, this isn't a replat, it's an actual plat.
Okay.
So there are a few lots that we have hanging out there that aren't legal.
The only thing that jumped up for me, given we discussed it in our last plat, was identifying the rights of way adjacent to the street and the curb. And we said that, that wasn't present in our previous plat when we asked them to put it in. And I don't see it in this plat, although you can see that the, at least the topo extends beyond the plat lines. We can't kind of see back a curb or any of the rights of way that are contiguous to the proposed plat.
Sure, let me see if I can share my screen and speak to that. Uh-oh. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, am I sharing? I can't, I'm all frozen on my end.
We can hear you and see you.
I can, I can try to share, Amber, let me see if I can pull it up. Sorry about that. So what we, what is shown on this plat is 60 feet right of way, which is the, which is addressed in the street, and that meets our code. All right, I'm attempting to share. All right, I can't see the screen anymore, so let me know when y'all are able to see that I'm sharing.
We can see it.
Okay.
So the, the rights of way for the street are delineated by that 60-foot designation. Is that the best way to say it?
I think, I think Amber is having, yeah, I think we lost Amber. But it looks like that's what this, the 60 feet in the street is. I will let her or Carrie speak to it, but if I leave the screen, we'll lose the map, so. Yeah, it looks like we have our 60 feet.
Okay. Okay, that.
All right.
Do we want to wait for Amber or Carrie to join, or I think we could probably continue?
I think so too. It turns out when she tries to screen, it reboots, but I think we're, I don't see Carrie in here, and Amber's trying to join back in. But, okay, she's joining the meeting. Yep.
Any other further comments then from the commissioners on the plat? Amber, you're muted.
We can't hear you, Amber. I know we see that we can. Okay, and also Carrie is joining the meeting. Okay, oh yeah, let's put Carrie in there. Did I answer your questions about the right of way?
I'm, I'm good with it, I think, as long as it's shown.
Okay.
I'll be honest, and it's whatever's required for the plat legally. For me, it's helpful to actually see a curb drawn in. We had some of that confusion on our last one as to where the curb was, and there was a little bit of differentiation on, that, that was a replat, so different case. But it was hard to see where the street was in alignment with the curb because they had a different sizes of the street. It was, I think it went from 30 or 50 to 60 or something like that.
I remember that, there was a little jog out. Yeah.
Meanwhile, the street is what it is, and it's just interesting to see the relationship to the actuality versus what's there. I don't think we need to, in any means, hold up this plat, it may be something we can ask for. I, you know, it's interpretation of the code, whether or not the street at the curb needs to be drawn in there. They just need to show, I believe, just show, like you said, that it's got a 60-foot right of way bordering the plat, so. All right, well, real quick, Charlie, we, can we pass, remind me, we can only pass this as a preliminary plat because of our code, is that correct, Charlie?
That's correct.
All right. Do we then have a motion for preliminary approval?
Also. Charlie, can they, Charlie, can they pass on a final plat tonight since the engineer could sign off and say that they didn't need any additional infrastructure? Charlie?
Sorry, I was muted. I can't remember what our code says, I thought it required two separate meetings, but I can look.
It doesn't accept, yeah, let's look that up real quick, because I think in the case that, maybe I'm recalling that incorrectly, but in the case that the city engineer can say that there, you know, no additional infrastructure is necessary. Am I remembering that correctly?
You are, Amber, you're remembering that correct. It's, it's written funny in the code such that it gears us to want to analyze the drainage before there's a structure. And so in the past, we have approved them both preliminarily and final, you know, knowing that they are gonna have to have drainage plans with their building plans.
Is there a structure on this property now, or is it, it's blank? It's vacant?
So I'm, where's that?
There's an L on it, Jordan.
So.
Section 105-29B.
What is it? A final plat may be approved without a preliminary, it says without a preliminary plat. So was this processed as a preliminary plat, or was this processed as a final plat?
It's not really any different.
So do we have a determination by the city engineer that a new street or extension of a street is not necessary? That the developer has dedicated additional right of way necessary to provide adequate street width? And the drainage facilities are not necessary for plumbing flooding? Do we have that, we have that from the city engineers?
Why don't we have the planning and zoning, if they would be willing to approve this conditionally with that, as a final plat, with pending that determination by the city engineer?
Also move.
Do we have a second?
Hold on, Tony?
I'll second.
Okay. So to make sure I have this right, we are proposing to approve this plat conditionally upon sign-off by the engineer.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. Well, guys, I don't want to mess it up. I mean, it's, we're 30 days from another meeting where we can do it final. The last thing I want is to mess up a plat. Just under discussion, I'm happy to go forward if council thinks we're able to do that conditionally. Charlie, what do you think? Can we do it?
Yeah, sure, I mean, I don't know how the plat was processed, this, the, says, what, what it says is that, B says specifically, "A final plat may be approved without a preliminary plat if each lot is within the residential district and abuts an existing dedicated public street, and the city engineer makes these, these dedications." So assuming, assuming that the process for, for a preliminary plat and a final plat are the same, or this was processed specifically as a final plat, then I don't have any issue with a approval of the final plat conditioned on the determination by the city engineer that conditions one, two, and three have been met under B.
Okay.
Or the other option would be just to approve it as a preliminary plat and then bring it back again for final plat.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, so we've got something on the table, and we're in discussion right now. So I just want to make sure we do right by the applicant and not take a step too far and have to come back and revisit this. Wendy, do you have any thoughts on it? If so, please unmute yourself, and we'd love to hear them.
Hi, yeah, so we applied for a plat. In our code, it does, it has to go to planning and zoning, and then the city council, but I, it doesn't have to go to planning and zoning twice, it'll be administratively approved unless there's a problem with the plat that you could identify that makes it illegal. So you either approve a preliminary plat or a final plat here, and then city council hears it at the city council meeting, and they approve or deny it based on the plat itself and what, what legal precedent there is to disapprove it if it were to be approved, is the way I understand it. So either way is fine with me, if it's preliminary or plat. I think our code just says it has to go to P and Z first, and then the city council, and you have 30 days after P and Z hear it, there has to be a determination for either another for us.
I think you're on mute, Jordan.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Wendy. We've got a motion on the table to approve for final plat based on the engineer signing off on those three conditions. There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead with a roll call vote then. I'll start, and then I'll just say names, signify by saying yes or no for approval of this motion. I'll start by saying yes, I approve. Mike?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve the plat based on those three conditions, based on the engineer signing off on those three conditions, passes, so, all right, fantastic. It is now firmly in the hands of city staff. So if we can bring that then to council with a sign-off by the engineer, we're in good spot. Thank you, staff and Charlie, for guiding us through that, we appreciate it. Let me flip back real quick to the beginning to my agenda. All right, the next topic was gonna be discussion of the residential tree canopy management ordinance. Amber, do you want to take us through? Amy was gonna be here, she's had a vet emergency with her dog. So Amy Patillo, council member Patillo cannot join us tonight. But Amber, can you take us through kind of what the thought process here is and what city council's asking us to take a look at?
Sure, so I think there had been some feedback from some of the residents that if they had taken measures to save a tree and measures by, I mean, like, investing resources, time, money, et cetera, saving a tree, it felt really disappointing to have to turn around and apply, if it died, they would have to apply for a tree removal permit and also possibly replace the tree. And so Amy wrote some language in here that would, would allow for the city arborist to determine that effort had been made to save the tree. And in that case, then the arborist could waive the tree requirement for the protected tree. And so the issue before y'all tonight is to decide whether you want to public, or publish for public hearing on this and, and possibly consider this language.
Do we have to publish for public hearing to approve the language, I'm guessing?
Yes. This is your zoning ordinance.
As I recall, we weren't involved on P and Z, as I recall, P and Z wasn't involved at all on the tree ordinance, right? Didn't the council just pass, write and pass that on their own?
Correct. Unfortunately, the council had actually asked legal counsel, the previous legal counsel, at the beginning of the tree ordinance process, if it should be in the zoning section of the code. He advised, no, it didn't have to be, it could be in the building section of the code. So they took responsibility of it because that's their, their area of responsibility. When Charlie came on, he advised that it wasn't the proper section of the code. And so at that point in time, y'all did some housekeeping, put it in the zoning section of the code where it's supposed to be, and now that's why this is coming before you.
Tony, if you recall, we passed that and short-term rentals and a few other things that unfortunately had gotten incorrect advice. Previously, we passed them in one meeting. We then scheduled a revisit of this. And Amy came in and explained to the commission, sorry, council member Patillo came in and explained to the commission just kind of the thought process and the work and everything they'd done over, you know, six to eight months. And we visited a couple times. I'm gonna go ahead and move that, guys, I see this language as innocuous and helpful. It came from a member of the community who was struggling to save a tree and is spending tons of money and felt like it was a bit of a kick, kicking, getting kicked while he was down was, because he's gonna lose this tree, and then has to go and buy another tree, and he's got tons of trees on his property. And so I thought it's a sense, to me, it's a sensible change. She's also got a few cleanup items of making sure that the code refers to the correct sections for. And so I think it's well worth our time to have a public meeting and put this on, and have a meeting about it and propose it to council for approval of change the ordinance. Carrie, you got your hand up?
Yeah, there are just a couple other things that, like, y'all, the
Yeah, there are just a couple of other things that like y'all to consider looking at. One, the ordinance requires a tree survey for building purposes. It does not specify the minimum size diameter of trees that need to be included on the survey. I know City of Austin uses a six inch diameter. Some places use a four inch diameter minimum. So it would be helpful if y'all would consider coming up with a minimum diameter for that. It would also be helpful. It mentions critical root zone, but it doesn't talk about how close or, or how much of a critical root zone can occupy with construction. So that's a little trickier, but if that's something y'all want to take on, it would certainly be helpful for me in reviewing these. You know, how, in what portion and what percentage of a critical root zone are you comfortable allowing construction? Are you comfortable allowing it, you know, within 50% of the critical root zone of a tree? With the understanding that if the tree dies, it has to be replaced, less than that, more than that, you know, just. That's something that comes up often and there's, there's no clear guidance in the ordinance for me.
Okay, those are two helpful areas. Any other items you'd like for us to consider? Carrie, any other items? I don't know if y'all can hear me. It's not coming through.
No, those, those were the two that I came up with. One, you know, one thing that we offer that y'all know, I'm sure is when someone has a water line break and they're able to show that they made repairs. We're able to sometimes assist with the bill. Maybe that's a way to approach this is, you know, yes or no, you have to replace the tree or you can show some sort of bill documentation and allow us to waive the permit fees. Just some, some way of considering it where we are able to be consistent with everybody and not treat. You know, residents who have lived in the city 10 years different from residents who are just coming in. You know, just, just some way to be consistent across properties and homeowners would be helpful.
Okay. How is the commission, do we want to handle this? Do you guys want to try and create a little subcommittee to kind of look at some of this language and propose it? Would that make sense for a couple of us who are interested in this to break away and come up with some language? Between now and September's meeting? Do we want to rely on council members to propose their language or, or Carrie to propose language or staff to propose language? Any thoughts for the P and Z? Is there anybody particularly interested in this?
I'm not very familiar with the tree ordinance. So, you know, I feel like, I think Amy, you know, wrote it is my understanding. So maybe it would make sense for Amy and Carrie to propose something to us and give us some context. You know, otherwise I guess we probably need to really dig in and, and fully understand the, the tree ordinance before weighing in.
Jordan, Wendy.
Go ahead.
Wendy's got her hand up. She helped Amy draft the original ordinance and I know she's been working closely with Amy on the revisions. Would you like to call on her?
Sure, please.
Hi, I just wanted to say that when we drafted the ordinance, it was with the understanding that there would definitely be tweaks that needed to be made and issues like this that needed to be looked at. And so as authors, co-authors of the ordinance, I just might even know that we, we want to make the ordinance better and that any sort of subgroup or working group or ideas that the P and Z has to put forward to help the process as Carrie is asking for some, you know, additional guidance on things that the city may need. Or, you know, additional items like this that are brought by the community, we're happy to look at those issues and help to just make the ordinance better and refine it.
Okay. I'm happy to work with council members Huntley and Patillo if the commission's up for it. And I can, I can sit there and talk to them about it and we can bring back some language for the commission to look like if that's a easy and fast way forward.
If you want to do it, Jordan.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I will then, I don't think we have to make a subcommittee or anything like that. But I think between the three of us, we can come up with some code and language for the commission to edit rather than have to craft it during session, which is going to be frankly impossible online. So, all right, let's do that. I don't know if we need a motion for it, do we? We just, we will just put it on our public hearing and make sure it's noticed. Okay, fantastic. Well, we'll just have the minute show that I'll be working with council to come up with proposed language for our next meeting and we'll notice for public hearing. All right, sorry, I, I am on a computer, so I gotta flip back and forth to check out the agenda. That is item four. Item five, I'm going to move that we discuss item five and six together and there's no action on these items. It's, it's for discussion right now. Is that okay? And that was to talk about accessory dwellings and talk about building and fencing setbacks. So we're going to take both of them together and then no action to be taken tonight on it. The situation is we look at accessory dwellings and look at some of the recommendations we're making on potentially for accessory dwellings. Mike Alexander, our previous building official, brought to this commission, brought to light submissions as we start to, rather than subdivide lots, actually combine lots. He called that estate lots. So if you look at the very end of your packet, he had actually proposed some language. I think this is probably 12 months to a year ago, or sorry, 12 months, 18 months, a while back. Tony, you may remember some of this stuff. And so we're kind of revisiting it. He had had issues with estate lots and how they were platted and he felt like there was a bit of a hole in our code with lots that could be combined. In this case, he had proposed some language. We've had a couple of cases where lots that I will call tandem, essentially back to back lots were proposed to become one new lot. And his concern was that it sort of changes the nature and face of rolling wood, as you could see in that final section. So I think the main deal is we've, we've seen some, as we're looking at how we want rolling wood to be from our comprehensive plan and recognizing that people are potentially buying multiple lots to build into one lot. We've seen some of the issues within the way we've platted as people have had to work the plating mechanism to figure out how to do it. It also then fits within the issues that we've brought up about accessory dwellings. And so here's the best example that Mike brought up. A lot could be platted back to back. We could then propose that more accessory dwellings be allowed. And what we might see then is no 30 foot setback in a rear yard. You'd have a different setback for the accessory dwelling. So someone could put their, their garage to be the front yard of one house. And they're proposing to put a garage or accessory dwelling and pushing it closer to the street. So we lose a little bit of that uniformity. There's also an issue on fences and that the fences aren't, aren't part of the building line setback. So there is the ability then to have a rear fence that has no setback that would essentially be back a curb if you were to replat a lot within our current language. So Mike brought this up as, hey, your plating rules kind of leave a bit of a hole that we could drive a truck through and you're going to be looking at, neighbors will be looking at backyard fences. And it's part of what we ran into with some of our plats, with the plats off of, what was it? Vance and Bettis and I'm forgetting the other street there. Neighbors were a bit upset of the idea that they might be looking at the back of a fence for a lot that they used to look at as it was a front yard. So this has always kind of stuck with me as chair and I'm bringing it to the light. We're not taking any action on it. I like talking about these as we talk about our desire to allow more accessory dwellings. It's something I wanted to highlight to the commission to consider. Okay, if we start to plat much larger estate lots, the setbacks of where we choose to put those accessory dwellings change based upon the size of the lot. And we may want to look at how we can maintain uniform as we, my, my understanding of the recommendation from the subcommittee was we should allow more excessive, more and larger accessory dwellings. How do we maintain some of the uniformity from a fencing and a building setback scenario based upon the way we currently plat? So you could see the proposed language that we dug up that Mike proposed that may or may not fit it. Is there any interest of the commission to address this topic brought up by our previous building official?
I do remember this discussion before and, you know, we went through a lot of scenarios where it becomes potentially problematic when you've got the back to back lots. I mean, I think side by side lots are, you know, fairly straightforward. It's just a bigger version of a lot that's already there. I mean, the back to back. You know, I remember we were talking about this. I don't remember taking any action, but I think the general consensus was that nobody had any desire to have, as you pointed out, a, you know, a fence in what used to be a front yard. So I don't know, you know, if there's a way to even just prevent that type of estate lot that maybe you can only combine, you know, two lots to form an estate lot if certain characteristics apply, which would basically be set forth as, you know, a side by side. Or this one I see, this is my first time looking at it, but I do see where it contemplates that you could do a back to back. You know, it seems like it should be a both of the back to back lots are corner lots. You know, as opposed to maybe one of them being a corner lot and one of them not, I guess I'd have to kind of think through that.
Yeah, it talks about, he had proposed no back to back lots, I think unless it was a corner lot.
Right.
Look at this again.
I was thinking you might need both to be corner lots.
So he says. Go ahead.
I was trying to, I was trying to think through the scenario. I mean, I get that a, a back to back lot mid block could lead to some very poor consequences. I don't, I don't quite understand how on a corner, I mean, obviously we have a bunch of, there's several of these on corners, I think already, but I don't, I don't see a distinction between it being two corners versus one, I suppose. I mean, I guess you, in theory, could, you know, if you had two corners, then what would be considered the back would be another street, right? So you could face a garage there. But is the current, does our current plat requirements not require that that has a 30 foot setback anyways?
It would and it would shift it to 20 if that became the rear of the lot, I think, based on the way the plat code is written. So it shifts the building line to a 20 foot building setback. The issue, as it came up with the one time we've experienced this, actually had more to do with fences. And that fences are allowed to be on the rear lot line. But that rear lot line is now the frontage of another street. And typically, our front fence setback, except for front yard fencing, our front fence setback is even with the house, which would be even at the very minimum with that 30 foot setback.
Right, okay.
We both have our helpers peeking in here, Mike.
I know, getting a massage.
There you go. So, I mean, there's, I'm interested in taking it on. I think it, it was not something I had thought about as I looked at accessory dwellings. And it just jumped up. I'd be interested in making it part of our accessory. As we look at this ability to combine a bunch of lots, how does that change the way the neighborhood starts to look? If we go tandem lots, corner lots, side by side? I think so far it's worked out decently, it's worked out well. The one proposed tandem lot we had, they took it, I think we've had a couple of them proposed and they've, the the, it wasn't a right of way, the, what's it called? The utility easement.
Utility easement, yeah.
It tends to wreck the plans. So I just think it's something we need to take into account as we're looking at these. As we look at multiple accessory dwellings and the idea to, and we may be proposing an idea to have more of these allowed and larger size. One of the things for consideration. So for instance, one of the proposals we're facing right now is the desire to have a rear an accessory, it's not even a dwelling, they just want an accessory building on the rear of their lot line that faces Zilker Park. Hey, chill out, chill out, goodness gracious, sorry. And that's come up before us a few times. That's fine when the rear lot line is Zilker Park, but if the rear lot line is the front of another street because they bought two lots, it makes it difficult. So it's going to be hard. It's got to be, whatever we choose to do has to be applied universally throughout the city. It's not a spot zoning or a spot code for specific stuff, but we just, I struggle with it. Sorry, all right, dog, you're fine. Sorry, mama's gone and this dog is freaking out. Apparently she doesn't like planning and zoning. So, all right, y'all, there's no action we can take on. I just want to bring it to the attention, bring it to the attention of everybody. And are we open to a discussion in a public hearing on this?
Sure, I mean, it, it sounds like something needs to happen.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and treat it the same way then as we're doing with the tree ordinance? We'll, we'll put it on our September meeting for a public hearing. Dog, chill. It's like a baby, sorry. All right.
I gotta jump, I gotta jump off.
Okay, thanks, Mike. We appreciate you being here. I think we can adjourn, if you want to be here for adjournment, that we can adjourn. Do you guys want to do that?
Yeah.
Can we adjourn?
I, I saw a move.
Okay, then I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thanks, Mike, we appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.
We're adjourned. Just know that we do have a meeting in September and we'll get that, we'll get that information out, all right?
All right.
All right, y'all. Thanks so much, everybody. We appreciate it.